The valet seats is in front of Starbucks?
Yeah.
Then if they came in, they came in around the parking lot and then they
Right out.
Take a right out.
Right out.
Drop it at the valet if they can't get a space.
Yeah, that actually could work out really well.
Yeah, because the valets aren't going to use that.
They're already at, they're already at.
So you can rest your arms for a second. You want me to answer questions from the residents as well?
Well, no, I, we're going to, but we're going to let the, uh, the play out. Yes, ma'am, come in and up to the chair that Mrs. McCadrick is in and ask your question. But we're not taking your comment right now. We are asking the questions of the chief.
Oh, chief knows what question's coming, too.
All right.
I live at the house that's most impacted by this. And no disrespect, but you, you, and you all think it's a great idea. That's my driveway. I can't get out of my driveway as it is now. Okay, so now I'm going to negotiate two ways of traffic. One coming in, one coming out possibly. Okay? The engineer you have for the town had an engineer study and took away that parking spot that that car is in because one of my children almost got killed. So that got put back. I can't get out of my driveway as it is. So now it's a great idea to access the parking lot. I can't function, period. Okay, then you mentioned a 40-foot truck going in and out, doing circumference and radius and turning point on and on. But now yet the chief is telling me there's a loading zone. Where are we going with this?
They were unaware of this, so they didn't know what we were coming forward with.
No, they knew about the loading zone because that was at the last meeting. So now I have a truck on Church Street possibly and a loading zone.
I was just going to ask the question to clarify that. The loading zone, the intention of the loading zone is for all the materials that are coming in and out of the restaurant.
Yes.
The trucks will access the restaurant for the loading zone.
Yeah, it's the trash.
Template is for the trash.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't know that it exclusively was, but
It is intended to be now, right?
Okay, and that turning template will not operate if there's a car sitting right there because it won't.
Good point. So I do want to say this, no disrespect, because we know you parked there. We looked at this yesterday.
I can't get out of my driveway.
I know, but there's, it's really a no parking zone at all between, uh, the, we, we, that's not, you don't have a designated parking spot.
There is, there is a parking spot there and it has been.
I disagree. I think that they've been letting you park there, but I think legally, if you look at it, it's a double turning lane. It's clearly arrowed out.
No, no, it's a double turning lane because of the engineer. And then Chief Murr realized with the engineer that you couldn't get out of the driveway.
So I'm going to say what? So he's going to, we're going to let you come?
He originally took it away.
We're going to let you come in March, but I think it's going to go away. I think it's going to go away. I don't think
So how am I getting out of my driveway?
Pull out of your driveway.
I can't.
We're talking about on-street parking.
I can't pull out of my driveway. If there's not a car there and a car on 9 Church Street, I cannot get out of my parking.
I don't understand why. There's a, there's a, right there, why could you not pull out? This, why couldn't you pull out of your driveway?
Because that car is blocking the cars coming directly up on my driveway.
What car? There's not going to be any parking there.
This car and this car are blocking people coming right up, so I can't get out.
I just said to you.
There is five to six car backup in the morning.
I'm not going to argue this now. I'm just telling you that the way we view that section of Church Street
Once again, I told you this was going away.
All right, but we're, we're taking comments to the chief and you're, you're making a lot of, you're not, we want questions for the chief. And certainly you're going to have time to make your comment.
If we're going to a two-way, how am I getting out of my driveway?
I, if there's no, if there are no cars parked on the street as the chief is suggesting, I don't see why you couldn't get out of your driveway.
So basically 9 Church Street and myself will be the only ones affected by two-way traffic, so I have to dodge cars.
No one is, no one is determined that there's going to be two-way traffic. It's going to be looked at, as I understand it.
That's what I just said. But I do believe that you ask where you park is not a legal parking space.
But you can
And I'm not the only one, I'm not alone. We looked at, I mean, the answer is all of us looked at it yesterday.
Well, I'll go back before the
You can look, you can look.
Because we'll go before the engineer before he did his report.
He'll be there, he'll be there. You can come.
Yes, sir.
Come.
Okay, one of her problems there is that bus stop that was put there a few years back.
Right.
That should never have been put there in front of my house. Is that, is that a consideration of moving that? That is the question.
All for the restaurant.
The T decides where bus stops are. Is it on both sides? Is it on both? I know it's on her side. Is it directly across from you as well?
It impacts, it's right in the red light.
Do you want me to?
When the bus stops there, it blocks the traffic coming from down
Church Street.
And it blocks, blocks it
Here's what I say to you. I don't, I'm not sure because we didn't really talk much about the bus stops in this. But I will look at the Howard Stein Hudson to see if it does move any of the bus stops. It could, it could. I just don't want to say yes or no because I don't know the answer right now.
And here's my other question. My other question is, it's a pot, pot, pot question, but pot comment. I liked your idea about the, uh, the signs and one-ways and all of that and that works right. Santana has a, a one-way up mechanic street from the bank parking lot, the drive-through teller. It's been there for years.
One way where you can take a left?
You cannot take a left.
Can't take a left. Right, you can only take a right.
You can only take a right out of there. That sign is just a mere suggestion.
Hmm, I give you that.
And the other, the other thing is when they, when they want to do the right thing, but it's not the right thing, they come through my driveway. So they think my driveway is a roadway. They've hit my house, they've hit my fence, and this is without a restaurant at all now.
Now, this is a question.
This is a question. The question, the question
I mean, you're talking something that I've never heard, so I don't know, I don't know.
Here's the question. The question is, uh, is this just going to be a mere suggestion, these signs?
No. You mean a suggestion that we, that we do what we can to keep the traffic off of this
You're going to post, you're going to post a sign and it's going to be there and it's just a mere suggestion. I wrote an article years ago in the Milton Times that the parking signs is just a mere suggestion in East Milton Square.
Well, I'll tell you what. So I can only respond to things I get complaints on, so that what you're telling, I only know it because I know the history of the square and I do know, I'll give you this, because the two streets that probably get the most violations, when something happens, a mechanic can pass. So if you back up Granite Avenue as on the other day, people are going to try and cheat. They're going to try and go past the runway, they're going to try and go up the mechanic street and all that. I'm not going to lie to you and say I can have a policeman on every street and every corner, it's just not, I mean, just, just the other day, just the resources that drew just for traffic posts was, but I will say this to you, whatever changes we put in place and, and, you know, I've heard statements that say, you know, we don't tag. Well, I dispute that because I have the Chamber of Commerce coming to us saying, can you please back off the tagging? So, um, I, I don't think, whatever we do vote, my primary goal is chairman of the Traffic Commission, and I think I speak for all of us, when we look at the traffic of this proposal and the passage of it, is to try and do whatever we can to, and we're not, I'm not looking at one specific house, I'm looking at the neighborhood as a whole, just as we look at the community as a whole, is to try and do everything we can to keep everything on the main street, to include putting, that's why we picked Adams Street as a loading zone, because I'm telling you right now, Abbey, Dunkin's, whoever it is, their loading trucks are stopping illegally and we've tagged, but then you have the store saying, well, where are you going to put us? So we've decided to tackle it and if we're going to put it in place, we're going to regulate it.
Here's my other question. My other question is, um, the, 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 the real problem that we have on Mechanic Street there, it's very narrow.
Right.
They, within the last quite a few years, put three more parking spots on Mechanic Street. There was never any parking there.
They didn't do it. We would have done that. I don't think
There's three parking spots there. My tenants can't get out of their driveway because of those parking spots. They're public parking spots. There's three of them.
If I'm correct, I looked at, isn't your curb cut on Adams Street?
No, I have a curb cut on Mechanic Street.
Both sides.
Both sides.
She has two curbs, right. You have a second curb, because I looked at the history. Didn't, didn't the prior traffic commission at some point give you a second curb cut when you put that house in? That curb cut didn't exist on Adams Street
Correct.
10 years ago, 15 years ago.
Correct.
It's been there for about
Well, whenever you built that house, you, you were given it, right, because I, I looked at, so I know, we're going to look at everything in there, every space, every, I mean, clearly parking is a premium.
Right, but those parking spots, those parking spots went in there.
Are these on the right side, on the bank side?
On the right side, on the bank side.
They are there, they are there.
And my tenants cannot back out of that driveway because somebody parks there. It's a very narrow street. Now, this goes on all the time. This is without the restaurant. I can't imagine what this place is going to be like when you put more cars in here. And our peacetime is after 7 o'clock there. That's our peacetime. We ain't going to have any peacetime anymore. I might as well just rip down the place.
Um, that's, I don't think that's
And make it a parking lot of two, you know, because
You're entitled to your opinion there.
It's impacting the residential property owners of that area. And that's the end of my question.
Who else has a question for the chief?
Okay.
All right.
Well, we
Yes, sir.
My name's Gerard LaFawn and I thank you for putting my
We spoke on the color.
Yes, thank you for putting my letter in front of the board tonight and thank you for your responses. At present time, there's a one-way sign beneath the Doonanetta sign at the top of Church at Adams Street.
Could be both, yeah, there could be both. It could be, is it a one-way and a Doonanetta?
Yes.
I mean, they basically do the same thing. I, the reason I agree with you on that is I think we just recently dealt with a complaint from a policing perspective of one of your neighbors who was coming out, taking a right, going, and that's, I think we, you're correct, it's one-way, not just a Doonanetta.
So is, is it truly a one-way from Basset to Adams Street at this point in time?
Yeah. If that sign is there, then it's a one-way.
Okay.
I, I believe though, that's from Adams, so that, because if, if it was only one-way, that means people in Duncan Lane couldn't leave their home.
Correct.
So I believe it's a one-way from Adams probably to Duncan Lane, because I do know there's not a one-way sign. If it were a true one-way all the way, when you came out Duncan, there would be another one-way sign to tell you that, and there is not.
Another one at Basset.
Yeah, another, there is not. There's no signs there. There's only the one that you just referred to.
And consideration is being given to looking at a two-way?
Trying to do something to keep the, no, 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 no. To making that street two-way? No, I didn't say that.
Top of Church Street.
No, I didn't, the top of Church Street. That was just a suggestion tonight. That was part of tonight's suggestion. I didn't say we've made a definitive answer, one way or another.
No, no, I, I
But I will, I can tell you this, we're not thinking of making Church Street two-way unless you're, are you proposing that?
No. No, I was asking. It sounded like you were giving consideration in making that top of Church.
Not at all.
Okay, that was my concern.
Okay.
Not to do that. All right, thank you.
Okay, further questions, Mr. Duffy?
Mr. Chairman, I just wish to reiterate that we need a, excuse me. We have to have a traffic study performed for this proposal and it has to have parameters from, say, Washington Street up, going up Adams Street and all the way to Granite Avenue and down to Wood Street.
Well, we, we will determine whether or not that's the case, but we'll finish with the, the chief for
I would just like to say, Mr. Chairman, it would be very, much more beneficial to the, to the people who are talking here if we had something on the wall, consistent faulty skill all the way around and say, what's the parking? I asked for this when we started this proposal. I asked for this. And showing each parking lot, each, each parking space in each parking lot, so on and so forth, and who has the rights to this, who has the rights to that? We don't have it in front of us, we don't have it in front of us to comment, to discuss this intelligently, Mr. Chairman, so that's what we need. Thank you.
Right, you're going to do, I assume, I, it seemed to me that I, at the last meeting, I did suggest that you had to give us a plan of that lot and show the spaces. Is that what the best you got?
Mr. Chairman, we provided this, this to you. It shows the two lots that are proposed to be used by this application. It includes the proposed lot, which is labeled as number two. It also shows the first lot, which is the one at 4 Franklin Street. We've obviously given you the delineation of parking spaces at lot number two. We also provided the delineation of the parking spaces for lot number one.
We need No, here, they, they did
We need the perimeter, Mr. Chairman, while the perimeter streets are affected by all of this, so we can talk intelligently.
Okay, so you, I, we do have, uh, we do have this plan, which could be, uh, could be made part of the package. Now, any other questions for the chief? We're going to, we
One more. I heard from my neighbor that the light
Go ahead.
On the corner of Church and Adams is regulated by the DOT as far as signal light.
Does.
I never heard that's ours, that's the town.
No, he says, because he's trying to change the signal light because the kid's crossing the street because it's too quick on Church Street.
That's not true.
That's us.
Will it be regulated once this, whether it's going up Church Street or whether you decide to do two-way, will you regulate that light? Because right now it's poor.
We just, I just spoke to that. That light is like so archaic, it only talks to itself.
Right, but
Yes.
Are we voting on this in March or are we doing something about it now?
On the light, on the, the light system is coming.
The signal.
The signals are coming.
The lights are coming.
The lights are coming as part of the East Milton Project.
Okay.
It's all coming.
And as far as the bus stop and moving the bus stop, we could not move the bus stop because, um, there was no crosswalk.
Okay.
There was no crosswalk. Originally it was in front of Zoom or the bank and it was in front of Starbucks. The reason why it got put down in front of our houses per Brian Joyce was, and MBTA, there was no crosswalk. Now all of a sudden we're getting crosswalk because of the loading zone.
It's been there for a good five years, if not more.
It's been more.
It's been there for a while.
I tried to move it because we have people sitting on our lawns, sitting on our porches, ruining our fences.
Just, just, despite the time, I don't want to answer that because it's not, but we'll, we'll look at that. It's really up to the T, they make that determination, but
But the signal light is going to be changed?
The signal light is going to be part of the entire new signalization system that's going for the whole square that goes from Church Street for the whole thing, Brian Ave, Adams Street, Granite Ave, because it is archaic and it doesn't talk to each other. They don't talk to each other.
Okay. Any further questions?
Very quickly.
We'll come and, someone ask your
My name's Rich Hines. I'm speaking on behalf of my parents at 20 Church Street. I kind of suggested a similar plan the last planning board meeting. I'm pretty happy with the outcome of the valet parking. It's even better with the loading zones because that's going to take the trucks off the street. I just kind of wanted to add a suggestion that I thought about after, um, and it kind of ties into you saying you were going to add crosswalks at Basset and Adams potentially?
Franklin.
Franklin.
Franklin, because there is no, and if you sit and watch the number of people that cross back and forth just at that intersection every day
Yeah.
It definitely warrants one.
So one, one of my suggestions was, I, I think the power, um, sorry, the valet parking is great, but you're only coming in from one side. And you mentioned that Starbucks, you know, you're not really affecting their business because they have their own parking lot. So my suggestion I thought of after the meeting last time was to do it on the other, other side of the street as well. At Dunkin' Donuts, there's one spot there and it doesn't really affect Dunkin' Donuts because Dunkin' Donuts has their own parking lot as well.
What, put a valet space on the other side?
Put one valet space across the street so you have two-way. So, because you could run into the issue where people are coming from, you know, the Milton side of the highway rather than the Quincy side, where you could have traffic backing up. People looping around.
There might be a safety issue on that. Just the fact that you're encouraging valet, you know, running across the street in unregulated, there is some liability for us, whatever we, like, a lot of times, it would be easy for us as the traffic commission to just say, okay, let's vote and put a crosswalk at, at Adams, Franklin. But under the warrant, which guides us in the Commonwealth and where you can install a crosswalk, any crosswalk put there, just on the volume of pedestrian traffic, would require a pedestrian crossing light.
Okay.
And, and if we were to do that and your mother or parent got killed, it would be, the liability would be placed on the town.
No, it was just, it was just something I thought about.
I've never seen that, but I've only been reading this, these regulations out for a few days. Let me look and think about that. The one thing that we did try to do was, we understand from the Howard Stein Hudson report and all the input from all the different agencies or residences, and particularly the businesses, was they didn't want to lose a lot of parking.
No, it's
But the valet would only be at night and the pressure is less at night than it is during the day, so
And it's
I will say that we'll look at it. I don't, I just don't know, for, just, to me right now, it just jumps out as, I'm not sure, I don't have a legal answer to it, but just from a safety perspective, I'm not so sure.
All right, just want to offer this suggestion. All right, thank you.
Okay, further questions? All right. Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you for your work. Thank you. Take care.
I, I do think that one of the things that the commission actually brings to the table is the fact that, um, of the seven members that are on the commission, the, the chief chairs, the town safety officer is there, the consolidate facilities director is there for the school's purpose, the DPW director and the town engineer. So they're both engineers and they're both looking at this. We have the fire chief and we have me to go to these meetings. So we're constantly talking to one another. Minus the town engineer and the safety officer, the same group meets every other week anyways to go through these particular issues. So when they come up, we, we do discuss them a whole lot more than you may think.
Okay, now, uh, why don't you address the, Mr. Duffy says that a parking study is, is needed here. What's your view? Have you addressed the traffic impact of this particular?
Sure. I think, I think what really hasn't been said is, you know, what we've shown is we've documented to the Z, to the zoning board and we've tried to document to you is that we, we comply with the requirements for parking just with these two sites. We also have available another property that Falcone owns, which is lot number three, shown on this plan, with additional parking spaces. We're not taking credit for any of those spots. And furthermore, lot number four is a proposed relocation for some Abbey Park parking as well, which has all been looked at with a, with a valet plan that we put together. And that's what's being looked at with the valet spaces moving forward. So we're only taking credit for these two parking lots. We certainly have available to us additional parking in this area. East Milton Square has, has traffic problems, you know? We've, we've heard that, we hear the residents' concerns. We've tried to address them to the best that this applicant can with this proposal. I don't think it's necessarily this applicant's responsibility to cure all of the problems of East Milton Square. When you look at the trips generated, the net increase of trips generated on this site when it's developed, it is such a small fraction of the average daily traffic in this neighborhood. It, it needs to be more of a town-wide study. I know the town has started to look at some of that. And we're certainly willing to do our, to do our piece, and I feel that we have, by designating our two lots, by supporting the traffic commission and moving forward with a valet plan, putting up the money to already have a valet system put in place so that the traffic commission now has something to go forward to the selectmen with. To do a comprehensive study of the entire square is, would, would be huge for this, for this, for this proposal, I think.
Haven't we, isn't there a traffic study that's been done? What has this East Milton parking thing been doing for the past eight years?
We're in, is it in 25% design?
We're waiting for a 25% design public hearing in February.
Well, you've looked at the, the traffic, haven't you?
Yes.
Okay, so, so we do have, uh, we do have a traffic study.
Right.
And the question is what impact this would have on the traffic as shown in that study? Assume.
Redevelopment was worked into the study itself and it's, it knew that some of the recommendations were even to increase the amount of cars coming into the square.
So it's looked at future projections already?
It does look at future projections. I mean, we've already taken into account the, the number of parking spaces and the study tells you right up front, there's enough parking for everybody, it just isn't in the place you want it. The traffic flow, the traffic flow has been, uh, we changed the traffic flow in that we changed Adams Street. We make everybody do the loop that goes around. And did the chief leave? The chief actually had four offices the day that we stopped it and had it ready to. He had two on each side, ready to take down the barricades because the police department didn't believe it would work. Within 20 minutes
He's back.
Within 20 minutes, two of them went home.
Yeah.
So the, the traffic flow does work doing that. As long as we keep that slip lane, everything moves down there. And does it make you, does it take you a little bit longer? It does. But this is an area that is supposed to be bike and pedestrian friendly. This is your commercial district. This isn't part of a speedway. You're not supposed to be able to go through at 30 miles an hour. This is something that you're supposed to be able to drive through, see the store, not drive by and see that maybe there were lights on. What was the name? I don't know. The, the idea down there is to drive through slow. It's not meant to be a speedway. Does it work? We believe it does. When we talk about things that we've gone down to tweak, the, the two left lanes, yes, it works. It actually brings more cars through. Does it have another effect? Yes, it stops some of those cars that are trying to slide down the side streets because they're trying to do, you know, cut through to get further down the, the road. Do we need to do more? We're constantly doing more on the traffic commission. We're constantly looking for, if we put a bottleneck here, it's going to leak out someplace else. We find where those things are. We try to. I, I do believe we've taken and addressed the traffic down in this area.
All right, well, maybe we could get excerpts. Yes.
Just a quick question. So the study looked at future projections. You're coming up for the 25% design hearing in February. I'm assuming then that the changes that Howard Stein Hudson are proposing as part of this take into account the additional traffic from those future projections. So any design that they come up with would address not only today's parking and traffic needs, but also those that come forward as part of the additional projections that they did.
Yes, and they're actually in the study itself. The study is online. The study is online. It is in there. It does talk about the level of service.
Okay.
The level of service before and after. They're all in there. And all of the projections come out being a positive step.
Maybe we could at least reference these excerpts as to where they're going to be found in the, in the study that's online. Yes?
Yep. And we get to it from the planning page, the planning board's page online? That's how we get to it?
I think it's on the town homepage.
Town homepage?
Yeah.
Just so people at home know.
Okay. So that will be, that will be done. Does anyone feel that there is a need, a particular need? I think we have to look at what we've got before we can say that there's a need for something else.
If they, if like Emily keeps pointing out, if this traffic study projects additional traffic due to development that consumes the new development, then that would suffice. But if it doesn't, if it takes into consideration only the present level of traffic and how to fix that, then we would need to see what additional traffic this development would generate from the people that have developed.
Well, I, yeah, I think that's right. I think that we should take a look at it.
We could compare the trips that are generated under this plan to the amount of projections that have already been done. And if they're less than the projections, then...
But do we have, do we have, right now, do we have the number of trips that it...
We have projections on the traffic out of there?
I mean, you said there was going to be minimal additional trips, but what is that?
Yeah, I'd have to look up the exact requirement in the IT manual. But I could certainly get that to you.
Yeah, if you could email that over to Bill.
That would be good. All right. Yes?
Could I just, if you would be so kind, just let me make just a general comment about how we've approached this traffic management, parking, traffic circulation problem. We've spent quite a lot of time from the beginning of this application and before we filed it to now, thinking about the problems that have come up in the hearings. And we've changed our minds about how to approach the problem several times. And I know at the Board of Appeals hearing, someone complained, well, you keep changing the plan. But we've changed the plan because we've begun to see that some solutions work better than others, that the neighbors who know the neighborhood are making comments and telling us what the problems are, and that we have tried to take those into consideration now with the final site plan that we've brought you tonight. And I, the solution is to study the square as a system and to take this proposal and to visualize it in the system as it presently exists. And I think we already know what the traffic problems in the square are. We experience them every day when we go there. So what we've done is we, number one, we proposed a restaurant. Because a restaurant doesn't open, this one won't open in the morning, so it's not going to contribute to traffic problems during the morning rush hour. It can get its vehicle, truck trips, you know, its deliveries during the day, mid-morning, which is a relatively low-impact time in the square. It will have some lunchtime business. But this is going to be primarily an evening restaurant, as is Abbey Park and even Steel and Rye. And it, for that reason, it's going to have its greatest traffic flow at the time when traffic begins to ebb in the square. That's why we're making a restaurant proposal for East Milton Square. But that doesn't solve the problem because, you know, there's still the question of how managed, how well-managed will the traffic from the restaurant will be, and where will it go to park? I think that the owners have made extraordinary efforts to secure and own parking that will be used by this restaurant. They now own three, or will own when they've created a new parking lot on Church Street. They will own three parking lots, two of which are in this plan. One is the Falcone Lot, 39 spaces. One is the Church Street Lot, 25 spaces. And they have recently acquired the Sprint Building, or what's known as the Sprint Building on Granite App, which has 25 parking spaces. And they intend to manage all of the parking that they own to the benefit of this restaurant proposal. And furthermore, they've undertaken to have a valet parking company, the same company that manages valet parking for Steel and Rye, which is a very good parking company, and the owner was originally a Milton resident, good reputation, do a valet parking study. And we went into the Board of Appeals with that study and with that plan and with that drawing, because the question had been raised, not only how will this restaurant park, but how will Abbey Park park? How are you going to manage parking? And why can't you work together on managing parking? So that's exactly what the owners have done. They've talked to Abbey Park. They've talked to a valet parking company. And they've come up with a conceptual plan. It's not necessarily going to be the final plan, but it shows that you could do it, and there, here's a way that you can do it. And one purpose of doing the valet parking plan was to show the four sites that the two restaurants would be using and how much parking there would be. And we were able to demonstrate to the Board of Appeals that even looking at the two restaurants together with the parking that will now be available, that you'd have a 2.5, a one parking space for every 2.5 seats in the two restaurants. This is an application for this restaurant. So we have to demonstrate, you know, what we're providing for this restaurant. And I believe we've done that. And I think that we've shown you that we are open to many approaches to reducing the impact of parking. But we've also specifically studied things like lights as cars exit the parking lot. We've studied impact on immediate neighbors in the back, noise issues, how to create buffers, how to make the site look more attractive. And those are all part of the site plan as well. And I think at this point that we have provided a great deal of good detail to help you decide that this is an adequate site plan. And I hope that we've shown you that by taking this approach and even by choosing a restaurant application, that we have been thinking about East Milton Square and how it works, and tried to think of a use for this commercial building, which has been vacant for a long time, that's a good use for the site and that will improve the way it looks and that will work well in terms of the way traffic will circulate. So I think we've tried to take that comprehensive systematic approach. I think that we've thought about traffic in the square as a whole. And we've talked about this quite a bit with the Board of Appeals as well, because they do the parking permit. And, you know, we've tried to suggest to you that that has been addressed and discussed, and the Board of Appeals has been satisfied. They feel that there's enough parking. And they were interested in the valet parking plan. And they were very interested in the number of spaces total that we were talking about here. And, you know, finally, I just want to say, we are proposing more parking spaces by far for this restaurant than Steel and Rye has. Steel and Rye was required to provide a four-to-one ratio of parking. Abbey Park originally was required to provide a four-to-one parking ratio. We're offering 2.5 to one. It's much better. And I think it's in recognition of the fact that we see how these restaurants evolved and when they're successful, they need a lot of parking, and that we're in East Milton Square that we've done that.
Well, I think that the parking is, what we're looking at is traffic rather than parking. I mean, the Board of Appeals has determined the parking. There has been a East Milton study, which if it indicates that this is not going to shut East Milton Square down, adding whatever the trip generation is going to be, as you point out, it's not likely to do so. But Mr. Duffy has said, let's look at it. And in order to look at it, we have to, we have to look at it. And I personally think that a new traffic study probably is not warranted. But still, you know, the issue has been raised. Let's just look at it. I think that you're right. I think there's enough parking. The question of how it's going to be marked and people are going to know how to get to it, and these are all things we will figure out. But so, we're going to continue.
Apparently, the traffic study that's going on knows the number of trips that are generated at each intersection.
Yeah.
And we're intermingling things here, parking and traffic. It's different.
Right.
And we're looking for what I think your engineers understand to be somewhat of a simple thing, and that is how many trips are generated by this restaurant. And we could give that information to the people that are doing the parking study. And like we've already commented, they could say, in projections, we've consumed that volume and more. Or they could say, hmm, we didn't understand that would generate that much. I mean, we'd at least give them the opportunity to look at that. I mean, with anything you build, whether you, I don't know, you build a church or a pop, you typically will give them how many trips are going to be generated in and out of my parking lot each day.
It's, and it's, Howard Stein-Hudson has a traffic model. It'd be easy enough for them to say, here are the trips. Throw it into the traffic model. You're fine, or you're not fine.
Why, I think a simple way to do it, we put the burden back on the applicant to do that and get a very simple traffic memo from the traffic engineer saying, here's how many trips we're going to generate. Here's how many were forecast in the Hudstein analysis. Here's our, here's your information.
Right, exactly.
Do with it what you will. I don't think it's a full traffic study.
No.
But certainly a traffic memo, providing those two pieces of information, is very easy to achieve.
Yeah.
Can be done very quickly and not on...
We could do a little, just lay out of the area and say, 50% of the new trips are coming, you know, I don't know, it's north, south, or east on Adam Street, and 50% of them are coming west on Adam Street from the Quincy direction, from the Milton direction. This is how many overall we should have coming in and out.
And here's the projected capacity.
Like Barry said, they're minimal to be zero from the peak morning hours between seven and nine. During the course of day, there'll be X at lunch. At our peak hours, between whatever it is, six and nine at night, this will be the amount that's generated. I think you follow in getting at this.
I'd certainly calculate that.
It just goes by a restaurant, the number of seats, so the number of occupants of the restaurant. And the IT, like you said, will tell you this is the X number you should have.
Okay. Ed, question?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Tom, Ed?
I'd like to ask a question of the engineer, please. What's the scale of the plan behind you, sir?
20 scale.
20.
Correct.
The whole town of Milton is on a 40 scale, the whole town. And on my lots, no. In the old days, when I worked here, they went all on my lots. But the whole area that we're studying, and I'm saying all the way from Washington Street because it's going to be impacted coming from the south, the whole area is available to be spliced together on a 40 scale so people in the audience can talk about the stuff intelligently. That's not a big, big job to do. At least you've got a plan in front of you. Without the colors and all this stuff, you've got a plan in front of you showing the street, the houses, where the cars park in front of the houses, and so on and so forth. It's simple if somebody wants to take the effort to go ahead and do it. At least take the 40-scale plans we have and put it together, and then we can start talking intelligently.
Well, I think people have been talking intelligently.
Bullshit.
Excuse me, not nice language to use there.
Bullshit on the other hand.
I don't appreciate that, sir.
Can I just make one? Mr. Chair, can I make one? I'm sorry. I just want to refer back to one of the meetings that I do recall with Howard Stein-Hudson as far as futuristic. At the time of the plan, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, we had concerns about both the library, which at the time was potentially going, could have been commercial property. The church next door, potentially a multi-residential condo. It's also the possibility that the post office could close or be downsized, and that could be, and I do remember them at one point coming to us with a plan that showed that, you know, those could even happen with what they were. You know, they were being future visionary enough to look out that far. So those types, I do remember, I do recall.
And that's the sort of thing I would have assumed, is that they'd look at current and make a reasonable estimate about future development going forward.
I think they clearly understood.
Answering the question, you know, take the IT data, how does that plug into the model? It's minutes with the right engineer.
Right, exactly.
If you ask, if you ask this Howard Stein-Hudson, is this, is new development going to impact what you've already seen? I mean, the first question might be, well, what is the new development, and how many trips is it going to generate?
Yeah, and what...
And if you give them that simple answer, they'll probably say...
We can give them what it is. From what Mr. Morris tells us in his letter, they can actually go back and check it. They'll do it, they'll...
Right, and just say, look, we anticipated this amount of capacity and more.
They agree with his number, they agree with his projections.
Or whatever it is. Yes, exactly.
Yeah, can I just say what we need for the next meeting?
Yeah.
One thing, one thing that I should say, this, you know, the plans only came in yesterday. And the public, didn't they just come in yesterday? They just got to us yesterday. When did the plans come in?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. The plans came in yesterday. So I, it, it is reasonable that they be available in the town planner's office for anyone who wants to look at them. So I've just, I've just mentioned, I've mentioned that for those who say, well, you've heard it all, let's get on with it. It does seem to me that there is stuff to be done, like your driveway. I don't understand why you can't get out of your driveway. And I think, Bill, would you talk with the resident and find out exactly what the problem is and see if we can address it?
I know, I keep looking at the picture, which is here of that driveway. And I, I know I can get out of the driveway, but...
All right. Well, we're not going to, we don't...
An offline conversation.
We will take, we will take further statements, but further comments, we would hope on the plan rather than necessarily on your driveway. But why not? Come up and tell us about the driveway.
Hello, is it? Is your name Bill? My name is Dave Peppicelli. My family resides at the corner of church and Adam Street. The reason why she can't get out of the driveway is because the cars that come down the street, the reason why those spots were put back was to block the cars from driving up onto her driveway. A while back, her daughter almost got hit by a car because there were no cars blocking that. So with the two parking spaces there, it deters the cars from cutting into the driveway. And it does block them. And making Adam Street at the very beginning a two-way is ridiculous. It's only going to cause more traffic coming down from Adams off the church. It's going to cause a problem. And it's going to cause a problem for her at the corner. You want to take away a parking space from a resident to accommodate a restaurant?
These are two street parking spaces that you're talking about, which you say shield her driveway.
It shields it from the cars coming over.
And when someone is parked in one of those parking spaces...
Correct. She can get around the car.
Shielding her driveway, they can't get out.
No, 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 no. You're misunderstanding.
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
So if I...
The shielding is to block the cars from coming through the driveway.
I get it.
Literally coming through the driveway.
Okay.
Okay? Taking the spots away, there is a sign there that says, no parking here to corner, not where the car is parked. That, that...
Chief? Please correct, but we believe that that sign should exist, extend beyond that.
All right. The only problem with that, chief, is the fact that if you're there and there is no car parking there, there's no car in that spot, the cars do come down Church Street, and they do cut almost onto the driveway. Me and myself, standing in front of her car, almost got hit one day.
That's the key word.
So they do shield that driveway from cars coming down Church Street. It is, it is a really, it's an active street. It is really busy.
I have another reason why I don't...
Nobody...
All right. I suggest, I suggest that, I suggest that, I suggest that people go look at the driveway.
I think, I think we'll look at this from a traffic management point. We are looking at it now. We just came up just yesterday. We will look at it. We may make a recommendation, so we'll see. It'll be at the next meeting.
Okay. Further comments on this application? Yes, sir?
Just want to get back to the dumpster. Bob, I know you said you were going to build a concrete structure. It sounds like that's changed. I just want to kind of get more color on what is going to go in there.
It's going to be, the picture, Greg? It's stick-built, pressure-treated wood, solid, it's on fence, six-by-six posts. It's on concrete. If you built concrete, it's too noisy. It holds, it smells, and nothing, we were told not to use con, Mr. Clark, and he would tell you...
You don't, you don't want them to make it out of concrete.
So that's why it was changed.
The smell will stick in there.
It gets hit, it gets wrecked.
It breaks, they can fix it. The other one, it just...
See, I'm just looking at this design.
Right, but you get grease on a wall.
Yeah.
And it stays on the wall.
Yeah.
You get something like that, they can clean all around it.
I'm not worried as much about the smell, which we are, but more about the...
But the drainage there, too, is coming up.
About the rodent problem.
Has air. We have, we have a plan in place for rodents. There'll be a signed contract. There already is now with Abbey Park. We have one in our building. And they do periodical control, and they'll be done before the building is even started. They'll go in there and do pre-treatment, and they'll do it during the construction, and they'll be contracted afterwards.
Okay. All right.
You do want to watch the smell.
Which all meets the law.
And that's better.
No, absolutely. We also, I mean, my parents, they're bought-in property, and that's a major concern for us.
But they can deal with the drainage this way easier. They can deal with the cleaning, the maintenance. You can do that with that. You put the walls up, and you're kind of stuck with...
Okay. I think...
It's not as good.
It's pretty solid.
I think if that's what you think is going to work, that's great. But I think it's something that we definitely want to be revisited.
Yeah.
If down the road it doesn't, if we do see a problem...
I think the Board of Health will revisit it if it's not. I think that's something the Board of Health is going to monitor for you anyway. That's...
Yeah, I would assume that's part of the inspection.
Absolutely.
Eli will be doing it anyways.
Yeah.
Board of Health will be out there.
I think we, we knew that you wanted the concrete. At the last meeting with the planning board, the planning board indicated they wanted wood. And then more work went on...
Well, we wanted something, and then Bob suggested that this was going to be...
Well, I mean, you wanted something really solid.
Yeah, it would be blocked, but they say that's not going to work.
So it's kind of been a back and forth. That's what I meant when I said the plans keep changing. But, so that's the reason it's now a proposal for a wood enclosure. But typically, in a site plan approval, there is, there can be additional language about what measures are going to be taken. So if we haven't detailed it already in the engineering plans, we can provide a couple of paragraphs, sort of what we just said.
I think he did, though.
But it may be already in there. I'm pretty sure it is.
It's in the plan.
So it has actually been addressed. But, you know, as the chairman already said, the final plans that we submitted today, they were only brought here yesterday. So everybody hasn't had a chance to read them.
Okay. And the dumpster itself? I think that was another suggestion by you, that you wanted the top-of-the-line...
Well, I think, and I think that they've, they've done that.
Oh, no, I, we have the specifications here.
I mean, they've got a pretty nice-looking dumpster in there.
All right. Fair enough. That's why I just wanted, it was brought up to me before, I just want to make sure that, now I'm on record, that that's extremely important to my mother, who, father, 10 feet away.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Tony McDonald, 4 Mechanic Street. With all due respect to the applicant, my comment is that tearing down these houses is expanding the commercial property in East Milton, your building parking lot. It's impacting our neighborhood. This project should be considered, not considered at all. I mean, it's too big. You have to tear down houses to make parking lots. You're ruining the residential neighborhood there. Obviously, these people are here, they're dissatisfied. I would ask the applicant to reconsider what he's proposing here. Thank you.
Okay, on site plan approval, we're dealing with a lot in a commercial district, and it is conceitedly surrounded by residential neighborhoods, which is usually the case. Most commercial districts are surrounded by residential areas. And the zoning provides for a number of uses in the commercial district. And what they're proposing is a use that's permitted, assuming they have enough parking. So it isn't within the, in my view, and it's saying, sorry, you can't do it, is not something that we can do on site plan approval. What we are trying to do is make sure the site is managed in as an appropriate a way as possible for the use. Yes, sir. Are you, yes, sir?
Brian?
Brian Kelly, I'm from East Milton, and I'd like to speak in favor of the project. There hasn't been much talk about people walking to the restaurant. My wife and I walked Abbey Park the other night. We didn't take any parking spots. And I didn't hear anyone talking about provisions for these restaurants in town if they have people, patrons, walk. So I've heard of restrictions at lunchtime if, because of parking. Maybe you should consider some kind of a waiver for those who walk, that allow them to have additional patrons. That was one thought. I do have one major concern. I was at the first meeting that was when the Falcone family introduced us at the Milton Library. And I was concerned, when Mr. Duffy was in attendance, and he spoke out vehemently against the project. And that's before it was, as a member of the planning board, before he's even heard all the information, I thought that was a bias that he brings to the table, and that he might be making this a more difficult process for the applicant because of his bias, and I understand his bias because he lives in the neighborhood. And so I think it's difficult, and I think it's hard to, for him to stand and look at this objectively. And I'm concerned that there might be additional hurdles made for the applicant because of this bias.
Right, well, I think that the traffic, the traffic study is, has been done. We just have to coordinate it with the facts on the ground. And I don't think that Ed is being obstructionist. Okay, who else wants, yes?
Hello. Cindy Christensen, 59 Collmore Street, Precinct Seven, Town Meeting Member. I'd like to say I'm in favor of this project. I'm actually very happy to hear, though, that through this process, some of the problems that have gone unaddressed in East Milton are now being addressed. I see that as very positive. I think it's unfortunate for the developers that they've had to be kind of the target for some of these. But I also wanted to announce that we're forming an East Milton Neighborhood Association with a first meeting on February 4th, which is a Wednesday. It's at the Milton Arts Center at 7:00 PM. It's not forming because of this development, but because of many issues going on in East Milton. And I would encourage anyone who has concerns or thoughts that cannot be addressed through this process to please join us, February 4th. It's two weeks from yesterday, 7:00 PM, Milton Arts Center. And please bring ideas, leadership skills, and some energy so that we can get this off the ground. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Barbara Veeler. I live at 81 Church Street, and I just have some comments to make, no questions. I have, I am very concerned about this proposed restaurant and its impact to my neighborhood. I've been following the development closely, and I've been, I've attended two zoning board appeals. My concerns are, there is not enough parking for this proposed development. My understanding is that the Falcone family have provided Abbey Park with a month-to-month lease for their parking. If that parking is taken away for this development, there will be customers of Abbey Park, where will they go? I believe they are double-counting the same spaces. During the zoning board appeals meeting, it was disclosed, disclosed that the parking spaces dedicated to the site would be spread through East Milton Square. It is, it's been very difficult for the patrons of the restaurants to find the parking. It would be not logical in a patron's mind, for example, to park at Dolan's Funeral Home on Granite Ave and walk to the restaurant. Currently, at any given time, you can see all the patrons of Fitness Unlimited, Abbey Park, Mr. Chance, who park on Franklin, Basset, Antwerp, and Church Street. The resolution of the parking issue was to offer valet parking, unless valet parking is mandatory. I don't see how this resolves the issue. Even the Falcone attorney, Mrs. McErick, conceded during the last meeting that she herself would never use valet parking. The parking situation in East Milton is already overburdened. It is my understanding that Mr. Chance has also been given permission to expand. The Fitness Unlimited has recently advertised additional classes. There are currently thirty-minute parking signs along Franklin Street. However, nobody complies with the thirty-minute limit. Parking is allowed now on one side of Basset Street, making one lane passable for two lines of traffic. In addition to the parking, there are some additional considerations of having these type of businesses grow in such a small footprint. The smell of the Chinese food is overpowering several streets over. I cannot open my windows in the summer. During the last zoning board department meeting, one of the committee members indicated because the square is zoned for business, any business at all, could be put in the space. I do not believe this is true, nor I believe that it's even a good idea for both the residents of the immediate neighborhood of Milton at large. The use, the use has to make sense for a size of the business, and the character of the neighborhood be more comfortable for an adult bookstore or a strip club going into the space. Question, I don't understand why the process, why the liquor license were approved before the project was approved by the planning board. I invite you all to take a tour of Church Street, Franklin Street, Basset Street, Mechanic Street at any time. Witness the congestion there. We cannot pass the streets because of the numerous delivery trucks and parking violations. This is a small space. I am not against new business. I'm not against overwhelm, overburdening an area, with busy area. One more thing, in the Milton paper tonight I read, there was 190 parking violations. Thank you for listening to me.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, I'm Carol Joyce Harrington from 41 Franklin Street. And she just stole most of my thunder. But I did bring up the fact, last meeting at the appeals board, that I'm concerned about kitchen smells wafting through the neighborhood. We want to make sure that there's a state-of-the-art kitchen HVAC system. I had mentioned last time around, I don't need to look at a calendar if it's Wednesday because I'll know the blue-plate special is chicken parmigiana. I can smell it all through the neighborhood. We can smell Chance, we can smell the home fries cooking over at Light Affair, which now I understand they're also looking to stay open for dinner at nine o'clock in the Milton Fruit Center. The parking is an issue. We did get the thirty-minute parking signs pretty much, almost all the way down Franklin Street. And it is not truly enforced. People will park there. There was a woman there for an hour and a half in front of my house last Sunday. And I'm about the third or fourth house down. If we call the police, they can't tag when I call because they have to go and mark the tires when they get there, even though the person's been there for already an hour. So the parking is an issue. If people don't want to use the valet, they will park in the neighborhood. And that's a problem for us. We can't even have people to our home to park in our, in front of our house. The holidays are a horror show with the Milton marketplace as it is. We've had Cisco food trucks go down Franklin Street. Because they're lost, they don't know which way to go. We had a tractor-trailer rig last Valentine's Day that was delivering flowers to CVS go down Franklin Street, take down half a tree and all the wires that go with it. So it is a touchy place. We are on the line of a commercial zone, we understand that. But at the same time, we're residents, and we pay high taxes. Our houses are highly priced. It's a good neighborhood. People love to buy homes there. But at the same time, things like this keep happening. And if the neighbors aren't listened to, or, you know, our business neighbors aren't doing what they should do with, again, the smells and whatnot, the trash, it's a, it's a big problem for us all. Thank you.
Can we address the question about ventilation, please? Because we don't have information.
Why don't you do that?
Sure. Provided on our packet that we submitted to you yesterday were the actual specifications for the pollution control unit. That was the filtering system that gets attached to the exhaust fans associated with the kitchen.
And it is, why don't you expound a little bit? It's a great system, is what you're saying.
It's, it's a state-of-the-art system. It's not a requirement in accordance with mask code, but it is an extra that we're proposing with this project. I'm not going to pretend to be a mechanical engineer and tell you the complete specifics about it, but I am told it is state-of-the-art. It is employed specifically to mitigate smells from exhaust fumes.
You have the specs in the books.
No, I, it is in, it's in the, it's in the revised application for anyone who cares to look at it.
I mean, the point of having this kind of system is that we've heard the complaints and we've experienced them of the smells from other restaurants. These systems are supposed to mitigate, which means there won't be smells. That's the purpose. So, I mean, it's just one of many issues. But we really, we understand the concern and the need to make sure that restaurants don't emit smells throughout the neighborhood. And that's why we're proposing this system, which is more than what would be required ordinarily. And I, you know, I think other restaurant proposals you've had recently have said the same because they were all hearing this, and we all experience it.
We recently did a project in Back Bay, and talk about being tight, close to the neighbors. And this restaurant, this particular restaurant was adjacent to neighbors, and they have roof decks and all kinds of things going on on the exterior. And we put this system in similar to this. It's called a scrubber. And believe me, you don't even know that restaurant is there. It's top, it's state-of-the-art, and we use them a lot, especially in dense, in dense situations.
Hi, Suzanne Brown, 566 Adams Street, corner church in Adams. Last meeting, I asked about the lights, and I asked if you could get a building to show me the lights, which was not provided. They gave me specs and a lighting grade, but they didn't show me a parking lot that is currently using the lights. And from what I understood, you told the applicant that was one of the things. Also, we didn't talk about building occupancy, which we talked about last meeting. The seating is for 140 inside and 20 outside, but yet we're not accounting for the people that are waiting or the people that are at the bar, standing. So I just want to know what the building occupancy is. As far as the parking, we went to the last meeting with the zoning board, and they said there was enough parking spaces. But yet, if you look at the model that they project, they're using the Church Street, which basically has an impact on me, for 25 spots, but they're also using eight stacked parking spots.
That is not correct. We're taking account for the parking that is delineated by striping. And the striped parking spaces are all that we need to accommodate the 64 required spaces. What we stated on the paperwork was that if you were to stack spots in the parking lots, you would have above and beyond the requirement. We have the requirement without the stacked spaces in the aisles.
And that is correct. But yet, on every document you have, you're showing the stacked. Either you're using stacked or not using stacked, because that is an issue as far as public safety, as far as if those cars are stacked around the circumference of the turning area, then fire, ambulance, whatever, cannot get to that building. They'd have to go to Church Street and go in from there. They would not be able to access the parking lot if it's stacked. And I did bring this up with the zoning, that's not true?
We, we have a letter from the fire department stating that they were, they're fine with the access to the site, with the parking lot as currently laid out.
With the 25 spots, not the eight additional spots that you would use?
As shown on this plan.
That's included in the 25 spots.
The 25 spots, I have no problem with, but it's the eight additional that you have listed here, and listed on your drawing.
Which we don't take any credit for.
Are you using them, or are you not using them?
We are not using them.
Okay, thank you. As far as demolition and the impact on the neighborhood, taking down two houses, are you capping the utilities on the Falcone property, or are you doing it on Church Street?
Respond.
You can, you can answer if you can.
We require a building department license to take down the houses. We'll contact the appropriate utilities and disengage them wherever we're required to do so. We're proposing all-new utility connections for the building. How we cap them will be up to the individual utilities, the water sewer department, and electric.
What is going to be the impact on Church Street? Do you have to rip it up? Because that's my access.
We will be required to cut out into Church Street. We will be required to get a permit for the DPW and to repair Church Street.
Okay. And demolition, as far as the trucks and the removal of waste? Hours of operation, impact as far as dust, do you supposedly have it? But the neighbors would like to know how their houses are going to be impacted.
The building department will regulate the requirements for the removal, but it will all be taken off-site by dumpster. Typically, a 30-yard dumpster will be dropped off. The house will be crushed. It'll be loaded onto the dumpsters and taken off-site. The dumpsters are covered with a tar pollen when they're not in use. Typically, when the house comes down, the building department typically requires, you know, spraying of water to keep the dust down.
Is there asbestos in those buildings?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. And then as far as...
I might add, that is not a site plan review relevant question as well.
Well, it's detriment to the neighborhood, which was in your first article that you mentioned.
Demolition of a house does not require site plan review. That's a building department question.
So we have a meeting with the building department, too? An open meeting?
The DPW is going to have a plan for this demolition. We're going to, I assume that we're going...
Building department.
The building department.
You said DPW. You said DPW. The building department will have, they'll have a permit to take this building down. There's no public hearing to it.